Thanks for doing this.
Thanks Dave. This is always fun to do every four years.
I was gonna say, we've got an anniversary on this one. And I have to say, it still starts at the same spot. I think it's really important for me people to know what your background is. Because it's an interesting story on many levels. But you know, people forget these things.
Sure.
You're meeting you for the first time here.
You assume that after eight years, you can just start in the middle. But you're right, we have to go back to the beginning. And eight years ago, I had a couple of people try to twist my arm into running. The economy was really in the tank. We had lost a lot of money in income tax revenues. And being a small business owner of Ship and Print Place with my husband, I saw that there was a void on the council in that aspect. And to be able to run a budget and figure out how to make things prioritized and efficient. And cut things that were difficult to cut. So that's why I ran primarily. I'm also from here, born and raised Talbot County native. Born right here when it was Easton Hospital. And so I truly, truly love Talbot County. And while we need, certainly need to grow and develop and get with the times, you don't want to lose what's really, really special about Talbot County and its character and the rural atmosphere. So there has to be a blend of both.
I guess, you know, it's interesting though, that you know, you can love a community as much as somebody like you does. And that's far different from holding public office. And I'm always interested in what it took to take that next step of being concerned. But more, in your case, now that you're incumbent, you know, what keeps you there now? I mean, this has been tough on a couple of levels. It was tough always, you know, in politics. But you know, there must be some driving issues that you want to continue to push forward on.
I mean, it's the people. It's the passion for the people and the passion for Talbot County. Making sure that those voices are heard. Sometimes we have public hearings and a lot of people come out. And a lot still is usually only a couple dozen. We've seen a lot, as in hundreds, this year. But in eight years, I've really never seen more than a couple dozen come to our legislative things. And so you have to hear the voices that come out. And then you have to listen to the quiet ones who don't necessarily speak. But you know that they, you have to know what they represent. And try to figure out what the majority is. And I think that as an incumbent, as someone that's been there for a while, you get better at that with time. And people are also more comfortable coming to you. Yes, they do come in my store and they stop me in the grocery store and places like that. But sometimes you just, you don't hear. And you do hear from the squeaky wheels. And while you have to listen to those squeaky wheels and oil them some, you need to make sure that you're also serving the majority of the citizens in Talbot County. And I mean, the people themselves.
Well, so you know, as you look at the last term, so to speak, when you look at the Talbot Council record, what are the things that you feel you were able to accomplish? That you can really point to as how it should work? And we got to a good place in the end and that kind of thing?
Well, a whole lot of land use. The first council, we started on the comprehensive plan. And it is such a long process that the first council, which would have ended in from 2010 to 2014, didn't quite get it across the goalpost. There was a lot of things that needed to be filled in. And so we finished the comprehensive plan with this term, the 2014 to 2018 council. And the comprehensive plan, as I said the other night in a forum, I mean, it's the bible of Talbot County. And you do get hundreds of people who work on that. And it was an update to the plan. It was not a complete rewrite. So we needed to make sure that we respected all the work that had been done during the years prior to the comprehensive plan. And then of course, what follows that is going to be your comprehensive rezoning, which we basically just finished a couple of weeks ago. And that has definitely been a source of contention with a lot of different opinions. But that was over two years in the making, where the planning department had meetings with the citizens. We had a consultant come in and try to compile all that. Then there were work sessions with the planning commission. And then the planning commission had work sessions with us. And then finally, we had our public hearings. But no document, when it's first in draft form, is perfect. And so we heard a lot of problems with it in draft form. And we had to explain that it is something that is coming through the people, the consultant, the planning department, that when it finally gets to us, we do need to make amendments, which is what we worked on, you know, primarily in August, was amending based on the feedback from the citizens.
And where do you feel that we came out after that whole process?
I think on the density and the sewer, we came out really well. Because there are certain places where you want to have most of your population living. And that's where there's existing infrastructure and sewer lines and things like that. And we have certain areas of the county that are very much in the critical areas. Bay 100 would be a good example of that. And what we need to do is run sewer lines for two primary reasons. Number one, to clean up the environment. So that even the best available technology, septic tanks, are not nearly as good as a sewer line. But sometimes when a developer sees a sewer line, they get excited and think that they want to put in lots of population there. And that would defeat the purpose of the environment. The other thing is, in those villages, there are homes that need to be upgraded. You might want to add a bedroom and a bathroom. And the septic tanks are failing. And so the only way they're able to do improvements to their home, which are going to help our property values stay high and have them enjoy their homes and stay there, is again, that sewer line.
So why was there so much anxiety about this in your mind? There was a lot of fear that this was a door opener for development. It was interesting who fell on which side of the fence, so to speak. But it was contentious and, you know, a difficult debate.
That goes back prior to 2010 with potentially large tracts of land. You know, dozens and dozens of acres. And the zoning used to be four houses per acre.
Yeah.
And that isn't necessarily appropriate for every village or for Talbot County. And so we had interim density, which was for seven years. And that's how long it took. I mean, this was an issue back before I was first elected in 2010. And part of the comprehensive plan and then part of this. But none of it was going to be officially, what was the zoning going to be? The density going to be four to one, two to one, one to one, one per two? What was that going to be? And I'm talking houses per acre for those that needed explanation.
Yeah.
And that conversation's been going on for nearly 10 years. And so here we are at the cusp of it. Finally putting, you know, crossing the T and dotting the I with the zoning. Because that's where the
Right, right.
Where you are able to enforce it.
Right.
So I think that's what it was. All this pent up energy for the last eight or 10 years on the sewer line piece of it. Of course, we had other amendments and other issues that came out over the summer as well.
And so, you know, where do you feel it fell short in your own mind? What do you feel like, you know, I think we should have spent a little bit more time on this? I mean, there's always that last minute feeling like, you know.
I don't know if it was that we should have spent more time. I think the people made it abundantly clear. We had 250 people in Talbot County, in my experience. That's a lot of people talking about many different issues. You know, certainly, we've always heard from, you know, the teachers and the parents at budget time for the schools. But that's a singular issue. What we heard about this summer was not only the sewer line, but the short-term rentals and the noise ordinance and the different land uses that we were proposing in the county. And so people came in to speak about one of those three or four different issues. But what happened was, they learned about other issues. So here they are, you know, their concern, say, about short-term rentals. But they're hearing the other issues. So I think it was really good for the county, even though it's been very contentious, that people became aware that one issue does not, you know, a council member make? Or that the county isn't just a single issue? That there's so much that's out there. So to finish the answer to your question, I think short-term rentals could have used a better compromise. I had one amendment out there to put a cap for about a year and a half. Because we are putting good new regulations in place. And I think people are very happy with the enforcement that we hope that will take place for complaints. But what you were missing, what's hard to legislate, is neighbors, neighborhoods. Just that feeling, it's not that the person who might be renting next door to you is a bad person. They might be awesome people. But you don't get to know them. And so that different awesome person is different every week. And so it's not like, I want to go next door and borrow a cup of sugar. You're not necessarily going to ask that person. And I think that, and it's not just unique to Talbot County, that when you move somewhere, you want to be part of a community. You want to be part of a neighborhood. And if that neighborhood is always changing and in turnover, that you want to make sure there's some type of a cap to that so that it doesn't. I mean, let's be honest, Talbot County's a beautiful place to live. Tourism is really important. But you still want those full-time, long-term residents to be comfortable in the neighborhoods in which they're living and not have half the houses be short-term rentals. So I was disappointed that we couldn't get a compromise on just putting, you know, a cap on it, which would have actually allowed for, we have about 130 licensed ones right now, would have allowed for a little over 200. So that would have been a big increase without allowing it to go crazy to 400 or 500 homes, which I don't think anybody would be real happy if it grew to that extreme, because it might destroy our sense of community. That's what I heard from people. It wasn't just about the complaints. It was about the sense of community.
Got it. So when you, also speaking of caps, there was a major thing that's going to go to the voters on
Yes.
A proposal. I believe you were seeking out a 2% adjustment? I'm trying to think what the, maybe you could sum up the.
I will. It's not necessarily a short conversation.
No.
So we've been talking for several years about the fact that we had new capital projects that were on the horizon, that were going to be very expensive. And that with the revenue cap, it limits how much you can bring in. So in essence, if you had, say, 10% growth, which you could only bring in a half a percent, a percent, or 2% whatever more revenue, that's not going to work. Not that we've had 10% growth, but I think that gives you an example. And what actually happens is your rate would go down. And we saw that happen. So like, what, what I wanted to do was identify, how much money do we need? Because if you give an elected official a certain amount of money, they're going to spend it.
That's right.
And being the fiscal conservative that I am, I didn't want to give whoever's going to be on the next council and the next council too much money, but certainly needed to have enough to pay the bills. So we had identified about three or four capital projects. And we do that in our CIP plan, Capital Improvement Plan, every year that we do with the finance director. And we knew that we had an elementary school, which was going to cost us $30 million to the, and our annual debt service on that was about $2.5 million. We knew that we needed to move our sheriff's department, because he's over temporarily at the Talbot County Business Center, the former Black and Decker building. Because the runway is getting relocated from one end to the other. So ultimately, in the next five years, that building will come down. So we need to find a place for him. We're figuring about $12 million for that project, which is ballpark about a million a year. And the health department was identified, that was identified before I was on the council too, you know, eight, 10 years ago. And that's probably an $8 million project, which would be $500,000 to a million a year. So in those new things that we have to do, I mean, there's no question that those are capital projects we have to do. That's about $4 million. We've not, have no revenue source to pay for those, none. I mean, we don't have $4 million. And look, I had to go in 2010, 2011 and cut the budget. But even then, we couldn't find $4 million, let alone now.
Right, right.
And then emergency services, that's the key. We have.
It's kind of the sleeper, isn't it? These words like volunteer, you know, fire departments are changing.
Right. Well, we're losing our paramedics and EMTs and deputies to the neighboring counties. And I don't mean just Queen Anne's. We're talking Carolina and Dorchester. And certainly, we need to be competitive and keep these people. It costs a lot of money to train them. And if all you're doing is being a training ground for two years and you're having constant turnover, we need to do something with the salaries. So we did do an adjustment this year. I was concerned about doing it this year, because we don't have a revenue source to pay for it. But the majority of the council said, we need to do it now. I said, okay, let's just hope that the ballot initiative passes. So basically, what I did back in the wintertime was, and plus I put about $2 million price tag on the emergency services. Said, here's $6 million that we need to raise for new additional spending. And how can we find, how can we raise $6 million? And that's when I came up with the penny plan. That a penny a year for four years would cost the average homeowner, the average homeowner has about a $350,000 house, would cost them $35 a year. That seemed reasonable. I think people understand what a penny is, percentages, you can play with those. Let's put a finite number on that. So what that does over the course of four years magically raises $6 million. So that takes care of the debt service and emergency services. And then we needed to get rid of the CPIU, which is Consumer Price Index, which sometimes was 0.7%. It's like, okay, that needs to go away. So maybe we should just be at 2%, which would, I think, take care of the rest, the rest of the county half of the budget. And then some organizations came together and they said, we'll support 2.5. They wouldn't do 3, and they wouldn't do 3.5%. So that's the only adjustment I made. But I wrote it from start to finish. I wrote an article back in February or March, an opinion editorial to the Star Democrat, and really gave the history of Talbot County, where we were lacking, what the revenue cap was. And so many people came to me and said, thank you for explaining that. And then I tried to come up with a solution. And I'm really, feel very happy that the council came together and supported that 2.5%. Because I knew in my heart of hearts that anything higher than that, the 3 or the 3.5%, the voters wouldn't go for. It needed to be just enough. So hopefully, voters out there, we need you to support the ballot initiative and vote for the penny plan plus 2.5%.
Yeah. You know, one of the big unknowns in all this, or probably I should rephrase that, the knowns, is that these school budgets are going to get more and more complicated under this maintenance of effort formula.
Yes.
And so it was interesting. I've seen these debates in several counties now. So it was interesting to contrast. But as you were saying, here's a relatively conservative majority Republican county council saying, we're going to invest in our schools.
Oh, and we should. We just need to make sure that they are transparent and accountable for their budget, just as the county is. And there are 12 or 13 different categories. We call them buckets that we fill, from administration, mid-level administration, teacher salaries, technology, the maintenance of the plant, the health insurance, all of those types of things that go in each one of these buckets, so to speak. And those expenses certainly can go up, just like the county budget can go up. What's interesting about what the state did back in 2012, and primarily geared towards counties such as ours with that revenue cap, is they said, counties, you need to have, you know, maintenance of effort, meaning you can never spend less. If you raise the budget one year, you may never go below that. And that's the fear. I think that's where the counties, it's not that they don't want to invest in education, but you don't know what your budget's going to be next year and the following year after that. And so if you do have a crash, like we did in 2008, where our revenues went from, income tax went from $31 million to $19 million, you had a 40% drop, it's not that you don't want to invest in education. You're worried about, what if the bottom falls out again? How are you going to do that? Which means a tax increase. And so what the state basically said was, you may, you will break your revenue cap and you will put an education supplement. And we have done that, I believe, five of the last six years. And after this year, I believe people's taxes have gone up somewhere between 18 and 20% on their property tax. That's a chunk. And that's only to pay for education.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think that's what people need to understand, is that once you've raised the budget, then you have to stay at that level and can never go back to a less than per pupil. And we are the third highest in the state. You'll hear two different schools of thought here. You'll hear, we're 23rd or 24th. And in total dollars, that's true. And that's because the state does not give us very much money. And I can explain that. But it's really a wealth formula that is not working.
So are you familiar with the Kerwin Commission?
Oh, very familiar with the Kerwin Commission.
Are you supportive of their recommendations?
Very fearful of their recommendations, as is the schools and the teachers' unions and the new hoops that they're going to have teachers jump through. And what they've come up with is, they haven't gotten to a bottom line dollars, but you're talking billions and billions and billions of dollars. And they want, it needs to improve the quality of the schools. That's the whole point. But they actually, and I have two people, I'm on the Legislative Committee of Mako and I'm also in the Maryland Association of Counties, also on the Board of Directors. And two of our people who are on Legislative Committee are the liaisons. One from a large county, one from a smaller rural county, on the Kerwin Commission. And I've been getting regular updates for the past two years that this commission has been going on. And I think we'll have a lot more information in December and January. And then Annapolis is likely to turn it into legislation. But they haven't figured out the dollar amount. And they haven't figured out how they're going to guarantee that there's an increase in the level of education. So they have a lot of aspirational goals, which are great.
Which includes taking on this maintenance of effort formula, right?
Right. Well, they might, you know, the formula could change. Talbot could actually get dinged for the, you know. Because it's not all going to come from the state. I mean, we have, there's a ballot initiative the state has this year. All the new, the gambling proceeds will actually go into education rather than supplanting the education funding where it was, you know, they said, oh yes, the gambling revenues are in. However, they took it out of someplace else. So Kerwin Commission is very complicated. They've had subcommittees that have worked on various aspects. But stay tuned, because there'll be a lot more information coming out from that.
So there's a birthday party all year round
Yes.
For Frederick Douglass, 200 years. It's a great American story. I mean, you can't imagine how amazing that is, that Talbot County was so, you know, significant in that narrative. And so it's just good manners to say, you know, this is a good time to see where we are. And are we going in the right direction? Are we, you know, do we feel like, you know, our schools are becoming more diverse? There's a, you know, there's, I don't know, 70 languages spoken in elementary schools?
Well, I mean, I think diversity in this country, that is what's happening. We are a melting pot. And we are a nation certainly of immigrants. And now I'm going to lose my train of thought. So you're going to edit this part out.
Okay.
Rephrase your question.
But I mean, it is a time to say, you know, we are trying to prepare for that 21st century Talbot County. And it looks a lot different from, you know, when we were here in the 1970s. So, you know, it's that kind of dramatic change. And, you know, you always want to get a check on, you know, are we prepared for this? Are we doing as best we can to actually, in some cases, make relationships better? I mean, all this.
I think there's, we have some, well, volunteerism in Talbot County is incredible. We could not, we could not run this county without all those people. And we have some amazing organizations that reach out to all the various communities that need help. We, the county, don't subsidize anything like housing. But what we do do is support these organizations like Neighborhood Service Center. And when they need to apply for grants, we might be the person who is holding the grant. And then those grant funds get dispersed to all these various community groups. Because they're the ones who are closer, who are in touch with those who need help, who are going to go up to that organization, whether they're homeless, or they just can't pay the rent, or they need help with your utility bill. And so that's the support that the county government can do, is supporting these organizations and helping them get grant dollars. Because we don't, as we know, we're asking everybody to go vote for the ballot initiatives, by the way.
Right.
Because there aren't enough dollars to do everything. And a lot of those types of dollars flow from the federal government and the state government. They don't necessarily flow from the local government. But we help funnel those dollars to the right place to help in those areas. But yes, we're very excited about Frederick Douglass's birthday and the wonderful park, renaming of the park.
Right, yeah.
And had Frederick Douglass Day a couple of weeks ago. So it's a very, very proud person. We're very fortunate to be proud of him.
Yeah. Great story. One chapter I want to go back to, because I just wanted to flesh out a little bit, is this whole issue of economic development. You know, most counties are dealing with far greater challenges in this area. We, this county has become a regional shopping hub. It has become a regional health hub. It has become a regional entertainment hub. And, you know, there's this enormous amount of commuting in and out of this town. So, you know, we all were there during the recession. It was not fun on any level, but I do see.
As a small business owner, I can attest to that as well, yes?
Yeah, yeah. No, it must be very interesting from your perspective. But, you know, there's still a lot of gaps. We've got workforce housing issues. We've got complex projects like Port Street investment. You know, there's a lot of ways to do economic development. And as a small business owner, I bet you've developed your own biases about what we can do and what we should be doing. I would like to hear more about that.
I think as a rural community, you need to keep a balance. You mentioned a large shopping hub. And yet you don't want to drive the little guys out, because we're the ones who are volunteering in the community and being those good neighbors. And so while you want competition, I mean, competition absolutely is healthy.
Yeah.
You don't want to go so far that all you have are big boxes and chain restaurants, that it drives the little guy out. So it's very challenging, because you don't pick winners and losers. But that's where your comprehensive plan, I believe, comes in, that you have a goal. And when you, when you say, okay, I have eight grocery stores, that's probably enough, you maybe don't approve, you know, the next one in. Because, you know, we, now, not we, you know, the town obviously is where most of these things take place. And so that's something that I think people should, you know, should pay attention to on the town's perspective, and we need to work with that. You don't, once for all, I mean, those types of things, those types of regional shopping centers, you want them, again, in the town, so that we can protect the rest of the county. It's not that big of a county that if you have to drive, you know, eight or 10 miles to get to that, you would not probably want a Walmart in the middle of Royal Oak. So you need to make sure that things are placed in the proper areas. I'm so excited that we, during this term, merged tourism and economic development. And that was, people thought we were a little bit like, really? You're going to do that? But it was the talent that we had. It was Cassandra Van Hooser, who we saw that talent, like, oh, we can use her for so much more. And instead of sending out tens of thousands of postcards all around the country, hey, you should relocate your business here, what better way to draw a small business owner here or a medium business owner here? If they've come here as a tourist and they fall in love. And if they happen to have a business that could come here, whether it's through telecommuting or, you know, the internet base type thing, or they might just have 10 or 20 or 30 employees, hey, I'll come here. I think it was one of the best things that we did. And I'm very excited about that. And the work that she has done with her team to help have incubator businesses out of the Talbot County Business Center. And we know it's only going to be there for about five more years. But there's so many businesses who just needed those temporary place to be. And, you know, on the subject of, you know, workforce housing, again, that needs to be where you already have existing infrastructure, for the most part. And again, we don't subsidize housing, you know? A developer's going to come in, he's going to want to make his fair share. So, you know, we just have to create the best environment we can. But we have to adhere to the zoning ordinance.
We're about ready to finish. We're about ready to finish up, but this is the time. I mean, we've covered a good bit of ground. You might have other things that are on your platform, so to speak, that we didn't get to, or just trying to summarize this, you know, this commitment. I admire all of you for being in the arena. It's not easy. And we were talking before the taping, I mean, it can get tough. So, this is a time to make your argument.
Local politics has nothing to do with politics and political parties. And we see so much going on at the national level, that I think everybody would agree, no matter what side you're on, is unfortunate. And people say things that they, that they shouldn't, and that it has created divisions in our country. And I do not want to see that happen in Talbot County. And, you know, it doesn't matter, really, what the makeup of the council is, as far as RRD, I actually wish that we would run as, without that, kind of like the school board does. Because almost nothing that we vote on, the budget a little bit-
Sure.
-I'm always going to be the fiscal conservative. But every other issue that we vote on has nothing to do with whether you're a Republican or Democrat. And people really need to remember that.
Why is that a partisan election, then? Why, I mean, you are running as a Republican, just, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of curious about how this all-
That's a good question. I mean, that's just, you know, you know, you could ask that same question about Orphans Court, or Clerk of the Court, or whatever, there are some. And certainly, there's probably more politics in county council than there would be in Orphans Court.
Yeah.
But it's, it really shouldn't be, and I don't want to see that partisanship come down from the national level. So, you know, people say, well, who should I vote for? You know, should you vote all one-party line? Maybe not.
Right, yeah.
You know?
I would hope not.
And I think anybody that says that, you know, their own party might get upset with them for saying something like that, but, but it's about looking out for the people. I'm going to go back to what I said at the beginning. Our job is to be in touch with what the citizens really, really want, the majority of the citizens. Now, they can't get everything they ask for, you know? If you're in the critical area, no, you can't build your house closer than 200 feet or 100 feet. There is still going to be zoning and regulations. But when they're asking us, and they're, they're coming out in, in droves to, you know, to amend something, and if we have the ability to do so, then, then we should. And you don't want to, to cater just to a special interest, you know, because they might give you backing. You know, you have to, you have to balance that out. Just like I said earlier, there's a squeaky wheel, but you have to say, is that squeaky wheel the majority of the county, or is it just a small special interest? Which, yes, you have to listen to them and balance that, but you can't create legislation just based on one small, narrow viewpoint. We have to make it work for everybody. I can give you one example, and that, you know, we have 23 villages. And what might be good for one village, because it's got a mix of uses, that has commercial and residential in it? And the zoning for that, compared to a village that might just have residential in it? And so, you might hear from that village that has all these mixed uses, what they want, whether that's noise. And that's probably the example I'm going back to, is the noise ordinance. But that would have destroyed the peaceful, reasonable enjoyment of the property in all these villages that are just residential. So, you're not trying to isolate and pick on one, one village, but what I think that, that that narrower interest needs to understand, is that we have to look out for the entire county, we have to paint with a broad brush. And then if we have to go back later and do some special exceptions here and there, based on what the land use is in that particular area, then we can go back and do that. But when we're doing this broad zoning that we just completed, that's where we have to look at every, everything as a whole, and, and at the blanket of the, the county, and not just one small area. And we can work on those smaller areas, I think, as special exceptions as we go forward.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you very much, Dave.
Appreciate it.
I enjoyed it, thank you.